I look for that pigeon.
P C S.
That's a very nice thing.
I got a black one.
Well, I need a blue one.
That works.
I'm like, ooh, Zato's left and he left me some of them.
It's all they know.
Setting the, setting the base.
I don't know, it's out of my expertise, I don't know any too much.
Thank you.
We have the guy that runs the lady that teaches the cemetery for us, her husband does the grant.
Do we have an official city's white water?
And so forth, and they sell stones.
One minute.
Thank you.
Through the office.
Yeah, they explain it to me.
No.
He's very deep.
You'd think a boxer would be faster than a cost.
I know.
Well, let me see, we can get some volunteers, I think. Get some master gardeners and boy scouts.
But you won't need master gardeners and boy scouts to set stones. You want somebody that's, you, you, you want somebody that can do it.
Oh.
And do it correctly.
Like I did that one last time.
Somebody whose name is Fitzgerald.
I don't know. That's, that's heavy.
Come on, what kind of construction guy are you?
That's heavy work, I don't, I'm not even interested in that, thank you, sir.
Uh huh.
Yeah. Randy does it, Randy Garing is his name, and he does a wonderful job.
Well, first we need to do the paperwork to give them to give it to us, then we'll go.
If he wants a cost on setting stones, I think that'd be good.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 7th of 2018 Muscatine City Council Meeting. Cindy, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Spread?
Present.
Harvey?
Present.
Brockert?
Present.
Saseo?
Present.
Brackett?
Present.
Fitzgerald?
Present.
Malcolm?
Present.
Seven present, zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Will you please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, we appreciate your presence. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to council about something that's not currently on tonight's agenda? Please come to the podium and state your name and address. Sorry about that.
Bonnie Gobin, 117 Chestnut Street. I wanted to bring to your attention a potential safety issue with unmarked curbing, the new medians that have been put in at the intersection of Chestnut and Mississippi Drive, if you're driving north on Mississippi Drive, if you try to make a left-hand turn onto Chestnut Street, everybody's hitting the curbing there because there's no yellow paint to distinguish it from the road, and it's becoming nearly a daily occurrence. And today, a friend messaged me and she witnessed an elderly couple hit that median or curbing, whatever you want to call it, and they were quite shaken, they had to pull over. So, I mean, I doubt anyone will go through and into the hotel, but you never know, depending on how fast they're going, so that painting needs to be done on the outside there.
Thank you, Mrs. Gobin, we'll make sure that we look into that.
Just a note also, we did actually go out and talk about that last week with Jim Edgeman, looking at some of the locations over in front of Contrary as well, too, where that medium is there, is a little bit at an angle and tapered, and during the rain, I got called where people couldn't see it as well, too, getting up on there, so that is something that we are discussing, and Jim is looking into that, so that's a good point, thank you.
And I know we're still looking at getting some signage down there, I'm still getting concerns about people turning into the hotel lane instead of going up and around it, so there's still more work to be done, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to council? Hearing nothing, we'll go ahead and move right along with the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case, it will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes, a very long list tonight, actually, items 6A and B, items 8A through O, items 9A through K, items 12A through G, and tonight's bills totaling $9,627,590.
So?
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Saseo with a second by Councilman Spread, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries with all ayes. We're going to move on down to 7A. We actually have a public hearing tonight, and it concerns the declaration of city-owned property as surplus and authorizing of its disposal. The city currently owns property described as lots 4 and 5, Block 55, in the original town of Muscatine, more commonly known as the Musser Public Library. The city of Muscatine plans to dispose of said property by a public auction. Now is the time for the public to comment. Hearing no comments from the public, do I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilman Harvey with a second by Councilman Brackett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries with all ayes. We're down to 9A. We have a proclamation tonight that I would like to share with you regarding National Garden Week. Whereas gardeners have a passion for nurturing the beauty and resources of the earth through the planting of seeds, the care of all plants, and the riches of their efforts. And whereas gardeners seek to add beauty, splendor, fragrance, and nutrition to our lives through the growing of herbs, vegetables, foliage, and flowers. And whereas gardeners work to preserve our country's traditional spirit of independence and initiative through innovation and hard work. And whereas gardeners advocate the importance of all creatures, large and small, that share our world and their roles in the balanced and productive ecology. And whereas gardening furnishes a challenging and productive activity for our citizens, for those just learning, as well as those having years of experience. And whereas gardeners promote a healthy lifestyle that lasts a lifetime, helps reduce stress from other areas of our lives, teaches that rewards can come from diligent efforts. And whereas gardeners enable members of garden clubs across the nation and the world to make a difference in the communities where they reside and work. Now therefore, I, Diana Brodessen, Mayor of the City of Muscatine, in an effort to acknowledge the importance of gardening and the numerous contributions of gardeners, do hereby proclaim the week of June 3rd through 9th of 2018 as National Garden Week. I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. It is my pleasure to sign this proclamation and award it to Mrs. Sandra Wales. Mrs. Wales, would you like to come up to the podium? Would you like to say a few words tonight?
There's a bump thing here.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Here you go, right there. Feel free to speak into, right into the microphone.
Thank you so much, Mayor Brodessen, for recognizing the good works that gardeners do, not only in our city, but all over the world. Our club here in Muscatine is part of the Federated Garden Clubs Organization of Iowa, and we are also part of National Garden Clubs Incorporated. And I think it would be interesting to people here to know that National Garden Clubs sponsors the Reflection Garden at Dover Air Force Base. So it is a contemplation garden for the families of deceased military members who are waiting there to receive their family members who have lost their lives fighting for our country overseas. That is a project of National Garden Clubs, and we here in Muscatine contribute to that project, as well as many other projects. We support the zoo garden, we have a planted pink garden at Weed Park, and we do many other projects within the city to promote a healthy, as you said, a healthy lifestyle. So, the most recent one will be at Hy-Vee Grocery Store Saturday morning, we're going to hand out seedlings. So if you're interested, interested in gardening at all, come and see us, and we'll give you some kind of a little plant, either vegetable, herb, or flower. And of particular interest, some of the flowers are especially attractive to our pollinators. So join us Saturday morning, we will be happy to see you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Wales, we appreciate you coming, and all the work that you and your club do.
Thank you again.
Certainly. We're going to move along with tonight's agenda, and we are on 11A now. Presented for city council's consideration is the first reading of an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter 5, Section 9, Subsection D of the City Code. The current city code states that all dogs in city parks be kept on a leash no longer than six feet. With the opening, though, of the new dog park, this amendment allows for dogs to be let off leash in the areas so designated by the Parks and Recreation Department, such as the dog park. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Spread, is there any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a question. Are the dogs going to be separated when they're off leash by size and/or breed, or are they just going to be mingling together?
It's, am I understanding, it's by size, and then it's also by older dogs and less feisty younger dogs?
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have anything else clarifying? That's the way that Peggy Gordon described it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The first reading of this ordinance is approved with all ayes. 11B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution declaring the city of Muscatine owned real estate located at 304 Iowa Avenue, the Musser Public Library, as surplus property and authorizing the disposal of said property. The city of Muscatine plans to dispose of this property by public auction. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Spread with a second by Councilman Harvey, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Malcolm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Spread?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. 11C. Presented for city council's consideration tonight is a resolution accepting a permanent right-of-way easement agreement with DG Partners LLC, which is Dollar General. On May 17th, the Muscatine City Council approved an exchange agreement for a dumpster enclosure and truck dock and related uses on an undeveloped portion of White Street right-of-way, in exchange for the dedication of right-of-way to the city, which is necessary for a new sidewalk improvements along Warren Street. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Brockert with a second by Councilman Harvey, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Saseo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Spread?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Ron 11D. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution accepting the completed work for the Musser Public Library and making final payment to Sheetz Design Build. All work under the contract has been completed and appears to meet all requirements of the plan and specifications. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with the, by Councilman Malcolm with a second by Councilman Brackett, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
This resolution is adopted with all ayes. Ron 11E. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution accepting the completed work performed under the West Hill Sewer Separation Contract Phase 3C and authorizing final payment to Hagerty Earthworks LLC. The work has been completed and accepted by the city engineer and appears to meet all requirements of the plans and specifications. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Spread, or by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Spread. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Malcolm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Spread?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
And Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
This resolution is also adopted with all ayes. 11F. Presented for city council's consideration tonight is a resolution approving the final plat of Avalon subdivision at the corner of Hershey Avenue and Fletcher Street. The intent for this subdivision is to allow for the construction of a single four-unit apartment building. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Harvey with a second by Councilman Saseo, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. 11G. Tonight we have presented for city council's consideration a resolution setting a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and cost estimates for the full depth patch construction project. The city of Muscatine has compiled a list of streets to be full-depth concrete patched during fiscal year 2019. Prior to awarding bids, a public hearing is required. This public hearing is scheduled for June 21st of 2018 at 7:00 PM here in council chambers. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second, Your Honor.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Malcolm, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question on this. Brian, I know you presented to us recently the information in regards to this full depth that you wanted to do, and how you came up with the formula for that. With the fact that we're looking at doing full patching as far as concrete goes, can we get a list of the streets that we have already patched with the new road mix asphalt that we're doing, as far as just a patch mix? So I know which roads we are not going to do with this full concrete patching? So example, for example, this last month, we have the new asphalt mix, correct? Did we do four blocks on folium with just a patch mix that fills the potholes? And two blocks on Park Avenue, because we're not going to do this?
So you, you want to compare the pothole patching to the full-up patching?
No, I just want to know how much we have and how much we've done over the last, let's say this, for example, we just got this asphalt mix, because I remember Kevin sending out the email saying, "Watch out, potholes, because here we come."
Right.
Well, I want to know, what is it that we, what is it that we've done? Because obviously, they're not going to make this list.
Some of them, some of them may, and you'll have the list for the public hearing, we'll have that list with the specs, plans and specs.
That way, when we, if we, if we get a call from somebody, we can say, okay, yeah, folium doesn't qualify, but this is what we are going to do on whatever other by street might be, or something to that effect.
Yeah.
And I know the way you formulated, explained it helped us understand that, but if we're, if we're saying that we're going to be looking at just doing this pot patch mix with that new road hog and that thing that we bought last year, I want to be able to explain that, yeah, we are going to patch it. That way, we're, we're at least having an explanation when someone calls.
Sure.
What we're doing.
Okay, I can get that to you.
Thank you.
One, one question for you, real quick. The roads that are selected for this concrete, and then full depth patch construction, is this as a result of the matrix thing that you explained to us?
Correct.
So, it'd be in sequence based on your?
Worst to, worst to best.
Okay.
Yeah. And we actually, you'll see this as well, we presented to you for the next, on the 21st, we did break some out so that we're spreading it around town a little bit, instead of doing some bad sections, maybe on one long stretch, we've broken those up so we can put a little here, put a little there, and kind of share the wealth around town as well, so there's a little bit of that in there, too, but it's all based on that matrix of which ones are worse, and we'll start with those.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Hearing no other discussion, Councilman Brackett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Spread?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next, we have on 11H, Presented for City Council's Consideration, a Request to Approve an Ambulance Service Fee Schedule Increase effective July 1 of 18. This schedule is reviewed each year during budget and then changed in accordance with Wellmark's maximum allowable fee. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Fitzgerald with a second by Councilman Spread, is there any discussion?
I have one question. Is that fall assist, that's not an insurance item, is it?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Yeah. I kind of anticipated that question, so we kind of ran the stats earlier today. I also spoke with the billing manager, and exactly what we wanted it to do has worked. And so between the billing manager and the EMS chief, when someone gets to lift assist, we send a letter, we call them, we go to their house, we explain this, and so it has done exactly what we wanted it to do. So we really don't have that great big long list of people that we're calling 60 or 80 times a year. We have a few people, and once they hit that second time, we go and, and make notification with them and explain it to them and try to, try to help them with some other resources. So, again, what we wanted it to do, that's exactly what it's done.
Okay. Looking at that list that you put out, if it doesn't have kind of the then and now cost, those other items are not insurance items, and I can take it then, including this fall assist?
No, the only thing new, the only thing new on the list is the disposable supplies. And the way that I can explain the disposable supplies is that Medicare and Blue Cross and Blue Shields does not, that's not a covered service for disposable supplies, but all other insurance carriers, so Medicaid, Work Comp, you know, commercial insurance, all the other insurance providers do pay or reimburse. So after speaking with the billing company, this, this is no different than the Wellmark maximum allowable fee that they change every year. If we're not charging for it, and they're willing to pay us for it, we're not going to get it. So the same thing with the disposable supplies. If, if the insurance carrier offers to pay that, then we're going to, if we utilize that equipment or that supply, we're going to charge them, because that's something that they would pay us for our services.
What do you, does Wellmark kind of speak for all the insurance companies in Iowa, or are there some that don't go along with this?
There's some that don't go along with it, and insurance, and especially healthcare insurance, is very complicated, but I tried to explain it in simple terms. Again, we would only, we would only charge it if, if they allow us to charge it, because then we know that we would get reimbursed for it.
So some insurance reimburses you, say, $50 less, do you just accept that and kind of write that off?
For, for disposable supplies?
No, just for any of the insurance covered?
No, every, again, every insurance company is different, so I'll give you an example. We could charge $1,000, but if insurance is only going to pay $700, then we basically write off that $300, and that's, that's the mandatory write-off that we do.
So you don't bill, pass that on to the person?
No, it's, it's, normally it's 80/20, so the insurance would pay 80, and depending on what their copay is, and they would pay 20, so we would do that contractual write-off. And that's why, when we look at collections, we look at gross collections, and we look at net collections, because it doesn't matter what you bill, because they're only going to pay you so much, and every insurance company pays a different amount. So that's why we do gross, and that's why we do net.
Any other questions?
Yes.
You have something, Greg?
Just, just to clarify, did you want a resolution or a request?
No, this is just a request.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I sent you a text.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's down as a request. Thank you, Jerry. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. 11I. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to enter into a contract for solid waste management regulatory assistance and administration, administrative fees. The city currently has a contract with Barker Lamar Engineering to handle situations where outside assistance is requested for small activities, not justifying a full scope. This request is to extend the contract through June 30th of 2020. Is there a motion to adopt the, or to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Harvey, any more discussion?
One question.
Okay.
The extension that you are having here, 15K per year, is that the exact was years before?
15,000, I believe, it's the same amount, yeah.
So nothing changed, just an extension?
Just extension.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. Next, we have presented for city council's consideration, a request to approve a salt purchase agreement. The city of Davenport has requested all members of the salt purchasing consortium to secure the approval of their respective legislative bodies, authorizing Davenport to act as the lead agency for this purchase. This agreement stipulates... Excuse me, allergies. That the city of Muscatine would pay 50% of the cost of order in July, and the remainder will be invoiced after delivery of salt. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Excuse me, thank you. We have a motion by Councilwoman Brockert with a second by Councilman Saseo, is there any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. Brian, we're already in two barges, how long would you expect that? It's hard to predict, I know with the winters, but is that one year or two years, or?
We would anticipate that two barges will get us through one season.
Just one season.
Correct. The last time we managed to make two barges last an extra year, two years ago, we, so we didn't buy salt last year because of this, but we buy that much to have on hand for one season.
And one other question, I guess, it's more of a curiosity question, how do you get it from the barge to where we used to?
Trucks, we truck it.
Unload it here in Muscatine?
It's, yeah, the barge depot is done by a GPC down in that area, and we truck it up to our lower lot.
All right. That's a bunch of truckfuls in it.
Yes, it is.
Brian, I have a question, quick. Brian, I have a question quick. Do we have anything left from this last winter?
A little bit, yeah, but not enough.
Not enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. Luckily, we're on the last thing. 11K. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to approve a DOT supplement, supplemental agreement for maintenance of primary roads. Annually, the city of Muscatine and the Iowa Department of Humans of Transportation enter into a supplemental agreement for maintenance of primary roads in municipalities. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Harvey. Any discussion? Hearing nothing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is approved with all ayes. We're down on 14, which is communication from council members. Councilman Spread, do you have anything?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Councilman Harvey?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Saseo?
I had a call in regards to something that I think Greg, maybe you can comment on. It was about our fill station for boats and jet skis and whatnot that we have, about it being a potential, you know, debit card ability for someone to do that. And I knew we talked about this in budget. Can you comment in regards to that? What was, I think there was a, Rich might have made a comment, of what was the reason why we couldn't put one of those in there?
I don't recall the specific reason, but there was, there was a rationale given by Rich Climes as to why we were not allowed to have debit cards in there. I'll get that information.
If we can get something that way, I didn't, I don't remember the whole answer, and I couldn't get the comment on it. But the, the comment was to me is, how do we not look at the future that, you know, now you're paying with phones, you're paying with debit cards? Is there a technology out there, or is it a, a, you know, DNR regulation or something that's not allowing us to do that? That's kind of really...
I think it's a DNR regulation.
And I think it was, too, but I didn't really have that comment. And then I didn't understand how some other cities, if we could look at it and maybe say, are we benchmarking across Davenport or other things? Can we, can we find out how they may be doing it that, that they're allowed to? So just something, if you can follow up for that, that's all I have. I will get that to you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Uh, yes, I've spoken with a couple of citizens, one on West 5th and the other one who lives on the corner of Demerus and Kansas. And they have both expressed concern about the cars speeding past their residences at all times of the day and night. In fact, the lady on West 5th said it, West 5th has become just like Cordova. They just zip up the street as fast as they can go. And then they come to Cherry Street and jam on the brakes and go on up.
I've noticed that also.
You may have seen that there's a, the mobile ATE will be back in service, so that might be a good opportunity.
Yeah, she mentioned that the ATE had been there several times, but it's always placed in the same spot. So if we maybe could move it somewhere else, it might be a little bit more effective.
Nadine, what was the second street? West 5th and what was the other one?
Demerus.
Uh, it's Demerus and Kansas.
Demerus.
Thank you.
We only have one ATE vehicle, and we use it in many spots. Moving it one block or two blocks isn't going to make a difference.
Okay.
What we put out to the officers is, there has been increased complaints in the area, and give it extra patrol as you can. That's going to fall in between all the other calls for service. But we do, we do know about it, and like I said, we, we've only got the one vehicle, so we got to move it around town to the other areas.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Malcolm?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Two things. Firstly, Church, I think, is 512 Iowa. People wants to know what's the status of this. I guess this window's broken. It looks in disrepair. It looks like it's a storage facility, but...
Oh, 512 Church.
Yeah, yeah.
Private, privately owned.
By the towers.
Near, yeah.
Yeah, and so I don't know what the status of this. But if we can get something in writing from Mr. Goldman and his staff and tell us.
We will do that. That's been an issue over the years.
And second thing, Your Honor, I'd like to remind the council and the public, this time next week, I will be in Lamaze, Poland. I believe that's how you pronounce it. I'm sure I'm messing it up. Representing Muscatine for, Poland is, Lamaze-Poland is a sister city. They're having a centennial celebration, and I'm going, my wife and I, to represent the city at our expense. No taxpayer dollars will be used for this. That's important to know. And so I will be absent next week, but I'll come back with a good report, hopefully.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Councilman Fitzgerald?
Uh, nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Councilman Brackett?
Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the Soapbox Derby. We are coming up soon on the 4th of July, and the Soapbox Derby Committee has decided to waive the entry fee, and we will actually be refunding those that have paid already because there's, there's been a number of them. But we discussed it. We're not trying to make money with the, with the derby. We're trying to get people to have fun, and so we have gone ahead and we are waiving that fee moving forward. So if you were debating on it just because of that, go ahead and get ahold of the committee, which is muscatinederby@gmail.com.
Kelsey, how's, how would you characterize the response so far?
Uh, we have, it, we've had a little bit of a slow response, which is one of the reasons that this decision came forward. But we have a number of, like I said, we've got, we have a number of entries, quite a few. We just would like to see a few more, so we're going to give that extra push. We have, I've seen a lot of excitement over the addition of crowd events, essentially, some of the things that we're planning on doing there. So I, I think that that'll be a lot of fun as well. And we're hoping to see a few additional food vendors down there if the logistics work right, so.
As I understand, it was kind of a fun, well-received event last year.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It was, and last year was, the temperature was so hot. It was a bit difficult. But that being said, I mean, I, I think it's a great event. Everybody that I've seen attend seems to have a really good time. And I look forward to seeing additions to it in the future as well, so.
Good.
That's all I've got.
You are aware, you are aware the public works said that there's going to be a roundabout added to the...
Not talking about roundabouts.
Brian had a hard enough coin. Coin straight. I don't know if he could handle a roundabout.
Staff, did you have anything tonight?
Nothing. Uh, just a reminder, a quick close session, Your Honor.
I just had a couple of things. Uh, just a reminder, as Mrs. Wales talked about, the garden club will be out at Hy-Vee from 9:00 to 12:00 on Saturday. The next Coffee with the Mayor is June 23rd at 9:00 AM at Happy Joe's. And Our City airs every Tuesday night at 6:30. Our guests upcoming this week are going to be John DeBeat with Muscatine Sister Cities and Amy Fortenbacher, who is our Musca Bus, Musca Bus Director now. And she's going to come and share everything that we need to know for summer transportation with Musca Bus. As most people know, children under the age of 18 ride free all summer, which is a wonderful service for our community. So Our City is, streams live on Facebook every Tuesday night at 6:30 and replays on Muscatine Power and Water Channel 9 on Wednesdays and Thursdays.